We will have to call the May 22nd, 2025 Annual Budget Town Meeting to order. As a reminder, please hold your card up when voting. If you have a question, please address the moderator and begin by introducing yourself. The first article is to choose a moderator to preside over said meeting. Do I hear a nomination for moderator? I want to make sure. Second. Okay. Motions have been made and seconded, that nomination ceases. I now need to have free written ballots cast for the nominated moderator.
For more.
For writing. I declare voting closed, and we have three votes for Joel Mary. I ask that our moderator come forward to be sworn in. Raise your right hand. Stand after me. I, Joel Mary.
I, Joel Mary.
Do swear and affirm.
Do swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So as long as I shall continue a citizen thereof.
So as long as I shall continue a citizen thereof.
I, Joel Mary.
I, Joel Mary.
Do swear and affirm.
Do swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
The duties incumbent on me as moderator for the May 22nd, 2025 Annual Budget Town Meeting.
As moderator for the May 22nd, 2025 Annual Budget Town Meeting.
According to the Constitution laws of the State of Maine.
According to the Constitution laws of the State of Maine. Greetings. It is my pleasure to be here tonight to moderate this 2025 Annual Budget Town Meeting. At this time, I would ask everyone to please stand for the national. So pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May you sit. At this time, I would turn the program over to our first select board member, Kathy LaValle, for a presentation.
Thank you, Joel. Each year, cities and towns award a Spirit of America Foundation Award. And the Spirit of America Award in Maine is an honor bestowed upon individual groups or projects by many municipalities for their community service and accommodations. This is awarded each year for all of the different cities and towns. This year, the 2025 Spirit of America Foundation Award is going to be presented to the West Bath Fire Department for the exceptional volunteer services and dedication you have provided to the town of West Bath. We are very appreciative for the continued support of the full department. The Great Junior Firefighter Program encourages other communities to participate with our department. Presented on behalf of the West Bath Select Board, we would like to present this to the West Bath Fire Department.
Thank you, Kathy. One other announcement before we get started with the articles on the work. I would like to make the following announcement, that Chair Kathy LaValle has submitted her resignation to step down from the Board of Selectmen after seven and a half years of dedicated service to the town of West Bath. There will be a special election on June 17th at the West Bath Fire Department, and the polls will be open from 2:00 to 7:00 p.m. to go for a new select board member. So I wanted to make that announcement. Okay. We have a lot of work to do, and we will not, I don't think, conclude this meeting in less than an hour. But nonetheless, I will say before anyone leaves here that this is the spirit of democracy in action, and there's nothing better than this very basic form of democratic society. And for those young parents who brought young children out tonight, I applaud you. I applaud you for exposing them to this form of government that we have, that we cherish, and it is the most basic grassroots. So thank you very much for that. Article one haven't been completed. We will move to Article two unless I hear a motion to.
I'm going to consider Articles two through fifteen as a slate.
We have a motion to consider Articles two through fifteen. We have a second. Is there any comment? Yes?
I just would like to understand the L-Wise. I just would like to understand the L-Wise section. I don't know what it means.
Thank you. Article two is to see if the town will vote to maintain and exercise. If, I'm going to stop the meeting right here. I apologize. I apologize. I'm going to ask that the motion be withdrawn.
I will withdraw my motion.
At this time. And I would like to first entertain a motion for non-residents of the town, non-residents of West Bath to vote here tonight, to speak here tonight. There may be questions that non-residents can better address, such as us, who superintendent, our town manager. So if I could have a motion, could you name the people, please?
I'll make a motion that we permit Julie House, Emily Thompson, to speak if the need arises.
A second.
Okay, a motion and a second. I need to have two-thirds vote for this to pass. All those in favor of the motion as stated. I believe that is two-thirds. Those opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Thank you.
I will again move that we consider Articles two through fifteen as a slate for the county.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor to consider Articles two through fifteen to be entertained and considered in one vote. There was a comment about Article two, and we do have, I want to say, we do have a entry, to enter. We do have a microphone here, so if anybody wishes to speak, because we've got such a full house, Deborah will come around with that microphone. Thank you, Deborah. Article two states, "To see if the town will vote to maintain and exercise a program, its right to take L-Wise from the New Meadows Lake, consistent with the terms and conditions specified at the March 1977 town meeting." Is there anybody that can speak to that? I recognize Mr. Hennessey.
David Hennessey. Article three, two and three, both considering L-Wise, which is now called Riverherring. If we don't exercise our rights, we lose those rights to regulate the fishing on either squad. I don't know the last time anybody fished in the Meadows Lake, but we still keep the rights. Winning is, is an active fishway that's shaped by West Bath, Bath and Pittsburgh, and that is harvested every year there. But if we don't do this in town meeting every year, we lose the right to control that.
Are there any other comments? The moderator sees none. I'll move the question. To consider Articles two through fifteen in one vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Motion carries. General Government and Administration, Article 16, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $315,857 for wages and stipends." Last year was $315,506. This would include the select board, $14,700. Town administrator, $84,000. Tax collector and treasurer, $61,152. Town clerk, registrar of voters, $56,628. Code enforcement officer, $58,130. Fire chief, $15,359. Health officer, $1,970. Road commissioner, $10,087. Animal control officer, $32,650. Harbor master, $2,910. Deputy fire chief, $4,367. Fire captain, two, $2,150. Fire lieutenants, two, $1,139,139. Total of $315,857. Do I have a motion? So moved. We have a second. Any discussion? Yes, sir?
So that we have context, could someone please give us the total town budget expenditures that if all these articles were approved will be given, and also what the associated expected mill rate would be?
Seven million, six hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirteen cents. The associated mill rate, based on current valuations, of eight point six mil. Off from eight point two mil.
Thank you, sir. Yes?
Robin Henson. I wonder why the town administrator, the tax collector, and the town clerk's annual wage has dropped, whereas everybody else has risen?
We hired new staff. We have a different staff, so their salaries change. It's different people in that position, so that they didn't, we didn't reduce their pay. We have different people in those positions.
Any other? Yes, sir?
Does the anticipated overall budget include the annual contribution to the county?
Yes. The question was to the county? Yes. Yes. Does include that?
That was a big surprise last year, I gather, and hopefully it won't be this year.
Are there any other? Any other discussion? Seeing no discussion, I call for a vote. All those in favor of Article 16 as presented. Thank you. You made a way to that. Those that are opposed? Motion carries. Article 17, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $180,878 for insurance and benefits." Last year was $180,096. That would include, for 2026, payroll taxes of $36,378, retirement $30,500, health insurance $80,000, workers' compensation $8,000, property and casualty insurance $24,700, and volunteer firefighter insurance $1,000, for a total of $180,878. Do I have a motion? We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any comment? Yes, sir?
Roger Powers from Sabano, Pennsylvania. We're not really changing the amount of wages and stipends, so I'm wondering why payroll taxes are going up 30%. And I'm also wondering how we found health insurance that was $10,000 less.
Health insurance is based on enrollment, whether it be family plan, single plan, different premiums for that. The payroll taxes is primarily driven by the paid family leave tax that was instituted as of January 1st.
Other comments? I see none. I call for a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Those opposed? The motion carries. Article 18, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $180,185 for town administration expenses." Last year was $184,300. And that will include office expenses, $69,385, computer technology, $49,500, assessing, $37,700, select board contingency, $10,000, vote, $2,500, office cleaning, $6,500, building maintenance, $13,100, for a total of $186,385. There is a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? I see none. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Those opposed, signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. Article 19, "To see if the town will vote to appropriate all dog licensing fees and penalties collected during fiscal year 2025, 2026, with the exception of the recording fee that must be retained by the municipal clerk pursuant to state law as additional payment to the animal control officer for services rendered to the town." Motion, we have a second. Any comment? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Raise your hand. Thank you. Those opposed? Motion carries. Article 20, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $20,000 for legal fees." Last year was $24,000. We have a motion? We have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by raising their hand. Thank you. Those opposed? Motion carries. Article 21, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $2,000 for general assistance." Last year was $2,000. We have a motion? We have a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Those opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Public Works Department, Article 22, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $859,000 for public works." Last year was $1,113,260. This year's proposal is for general roads, $292,500. Bridge Point Road reconstruction, final phase, $265,500. Salt Shed, $2,000. Streetlights, $2,000. And snow removal, $297,000, for a total of $859,000. Is there a motion? There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? I see none. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Those opposed? Motion carries. Article 23, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $16,600 for sanitation." Last year was $16,600. For roadside recycling, $11,600. If a hazardous waste, composting, $5,000, for a total of $16,600. I have a motion. I have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Those opposed? Motion carries. Article 24, "To see if the town will vote to transfer all remaining unexpended funds at the end of fiscal year 2024, 2025, from the Public Works Department to the Public Works Department Capital Fund for future capital expenditures." I have a motion. I have a second. Is there any discussion? General? Yes, sir? The question is, how much is that?
Can you speak up? I need to hear you.
The current one has 290,000.
The current fund has 290,000. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, I move the question. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Thank you. All those opposed? Motion carries. Now onto the Fire Department. Article 25, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $339,922 for protection." Last year was $216,210, plus $60,890, for a total of $277,100. Per diem is included in this article this year. That would include ambulance service, $100,000, hydrants, $44,200, fire department operations, $84,235, fire department incentive, $27,176, fire department per diem, $80,983, animal control, $3,328, worth, again, a total of $339,922. Is there a motion? Thank you. There is a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify. Robin, did you have a question? Yes, Robin.
I can talk without a mic.
Okay.
I'm pretty good at talking without a mic. Well, I just wondered why everything is going so, and what's being done by per diem? Who's being paid per diem?
Per diem is generally part-time employees who don't, who unemployed full-time.
We had fire coverage over the weekend to have two people, which we didn't have previously. We had per diem, but that's the reason why that per diem might not be added, covered over weekends.
Is that correct, John? Correct.
Other questions, comments? Seeing none, I move the question. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? Motion carries. Article 26, "To see if the town will vote to transfer all remaining unexpended funds at the end of the fiscal year 2024, 2025, from the fire department operations to the fire department capital fund for further capital building, vehicle, and/or equipment expenditures." Motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, how much?
How much?
There's currently 22,000 in that account.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Those opposed? Motion carries. Article 27, "Community Agencies and Organizations," excuse me. Article 27, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the following as donations to community agencies." Proposed for 2025, 2026, Bath Senior Citizens, $950. Bath Area Food Bank, $2,000. Spectrum Generations, $1,915. Sweetser, $2,292. New Hope for Women, $820, for a total of $7,977. I have a motion. I have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Call the vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Those opposed? Motion carries. Article 28, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $44,517 for library funded." Last year, it was $41,332. We have a motion and a second. I am going to ask a moderator for unanimous consent that the vote for this article be done by written ballot. Is there any objection to that? Seeing none. There will be no objection. Voting on this article will be by written ballot.
It's your blue.
And it's the blue.
I can't mic.
This is the last call for vote. Is there anybody else that needs to cast a vote? See and none. I'll call for a meeting back quarter. I didn't have. Okay. While they're counting.
While they're counting, I would like to make a motion that we move on to Article 30.
Second.
We have a motion to move to take the articles out of order to take Article 30, take up Article 30 over Article 29. We have a second. Is there any discussion? See and none. I call for a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? Motion carries. Article 30, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $3,000 for the planning board stipends. Last year it was $3,000. We have a motion. We have a second. You voted on taking the articles out of order. It's a parliamentary thing, I'm sorry. Any discussion on that? Stipends for the planning board? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Those opposed? Motion carries. Still counting. We have a motion to to take Article 31 out of turn. And we have a second. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Any opposed? Motion carries. Waterways and towns, Article 31, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $7,500 for harbors and waterways. Last year it was $11,600. This year's funds would be shellfish, warden, contract, $5,500 and harbor master, $2,000 for $7,500. We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion? See and none. Call for the vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Any opposed? Motion carries. We have a motion to take Article 32 out of order. We have a second. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Any opposed? That motion carries. Article 32, shall the town of West Bath marine resource conservation ordinance be amended to remove the following language from Section E, subsection 3B and Section E, subsection 4B. Applicants must not hold a shellfish license with another municipality. That would be, that would be the language to be stripped from that ordinance.
It was removed from other sections of the ordinance and that was left in two other areas that should have been previously removed as required.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Kathy Cotton, I'd just like to know, you know, why it was. I'm not a fisher person, so, um, is it okay to have other people that live in other municipalities fishing ours?
It is required for
Use the microphone.
for that to be, if it's the, the state required us to remove that language. We put that in the ordinance last year and it not been fully approved. It should not have actually have been in last year's ordinance. It is required by the state to be removed.
So that means that anybody can fish in anybody's town? Shellfish? Yeah, like land anywhere.
Should they have a license? We're limited to the number of licenses.
Yes.
Yes. If they qualify, they shouldn't be, in theory, are allowed to have one. Should they hold a license?
Does anybody have any idea how many? I mean, what percentage of people that do this job now live in another municipality? 20% to 60%?
Every 10 people, we get one license.
Is that correct? Every 10 West Bath people, you get one out-of-town license?
Just dancing.
I believe one reason this was taken out of the ordinance besides the state controls it is that if a harbors in West Bath had a license to say, "Go into Pittsburgh," he couldn't have gotten a West Bath license. So that's one reason for the change.
It reciprocates both ways. Correct.
We have a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any other discussion? See and none. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Do we have results? We do have results. Okay. Okay, we have a motion to do the long-term capital improvement fund. Articles 33 and 34 out of order. We'll make that one motion for both articles. And we have a second. Second. We have a second. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Those opposed? That motion carries. So, moving on to Article 33, to see if the town will vote to transfer $50,000 from unassigned fund balance or surplus to the long-term capital improvement fund reserve account in order to replenish funds that were previously appropriated for capital improvement projects. Motion. I have a second. Is there any discussion? See and none. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Those opposed? Motion carries. Article 34, to see if the town will vote to give all money received from the state of Maine for snowmobile registrations to the Over the Hill ATV Club. We have
Second.
Motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Can somebody explain who the AT, the Over the Hill ATV Club is and why are we giving them the money?
So, we, they're They've been a significant contributor to our town. They have an organization, but they also do us a lot of cleanup along the roadway, picking up the trash and supporting all that this town does. And there's not a significant amount of money that we receive. $350 is what we're allowing them to take. It's fair. And they maintain the trails.
Any other questions or comments? See and none. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Thank you. All those opposed? Motion carries. Results of the Article 27. Okay. Article 28, here, I apologize. Article 28, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $44,517 for library funded. Last year it was $41,332. 90 AAs, 10 NAs. Motion carries. Article 29, to see which option the town would like to fund with Article 28. The Budget Committee did not review this article. Option A, patent-free library. Option B, library of individual choice. Let me clarify. Option A would be to fund the patent-free library in full, while Option B would be for an individual resident to obtain a library card at a library of their choice within Cumberland, Lincoln, and Saginaw counties and will be reimbursed by the town up to $85 per resident card holder per year. Limited to the amount appropriated in Article 28. I ask that unanimous consent that this voting on this article be by written ballot. Is there an objection?
Will there be discussion before we take this one?
Okay. Point of order. The motion. We have a motion. We have a second. Now, I would ask for any comment or questions. Yes, sir.
Hold on.
Because there is significant interest in this. I would like it.
Just a question of clarification. In Option A, everybody who's a resident of West Bath could have a library card at Patent Free Library. But Option B with library of individual choice, because it's limited to the cap and it would be $85 per resident, only 523 residents would be able to get library cards. Is that correct?
That's correct. $467 are full cards at the library.
Okay. So the rest of us would just have to pay our $85 and not get reimbursed.
Other questions or comments? Yes, ma'am.
Maria Morris, I've been a resident of West Bath for well over, almost 35 years. While on the surface, library choice seems like a nice idea. As this gentleman pointed out, there will be a limited number of folks who can get a library card. Further, there are repercussions to library choice in that the town of West Bath will lose some services that are currently available to us from Patent Free Library. One of which is storage of our archives in the historical room. We will also lose our voice at the Patent Free Library. And also barriers will be raised to families and individuals getting library cards. Imagine, we have several families of four and five, families of four and five here tonight. And that would be very difficult for them to pay upfront library cards, go to the town, request reimbursement, wait for reimbursement. And then let us talk about the costs that will be instilled into the town for processing those reimbursements. Postage, processing of checks, and the time for the staff involved. Lastly, this is the town of West Bath. And a library is the heart of a community. And Bath is a piece of that. And they provide a lovely array of services beyond offering books. And I truly believe that it's valuable to us to continue to support the Patent Free Library as a part of our community.
I recognize the lady in the back. Oh. I'm sorry. The lady in front.
Thank you. Catherine Jacobs. We voted on this particular ordinance several years ago. I just wonder why you're here again doing the same thing. Thank you.
The lady in the back and then the gentleman in the back.
Jennifer Bodisch, I live on Foster's Point Road. I just want to say, I raised my kids at the Patent Free Library. We've lived here for 17 years. I've got a college-age kid, a junior in high school. They're both National Honor Society. Reading and listening to reading is one of the greatest predictors of educational success. And actually lifespan, your lifespan goes up by 20%. Just read that tonight. I also did research that the library is in Cumberland. Like the Curtis Memorial is $75 a year, as well as the library in Topsom. So the fees are going to be similar with the library of choice. I just watched on Facebook a number of families watching their kids go to prom last week on the gazebo. Where? In front of Patent Free Library. Those are kids of West Bath. This is an essential part of our community. Please support it.
Did we vote on the motion on the floor of a secret ballot?
We have taken that up, yes.
Then as point of order, can we do that and then comments on Article 28?
I, I, as moderator, I would ask unanimous consent that the voting of this article be by written ballot. Is there any objection? See and none. I would ask one final time. Is there any comments or questions? I see none. So the moderator would move the question by written ballot. And it would be the pink, it would be the pink card.
Okay. Yeah. At some point I can go if they can.
If you're out of town, if you're in out of town, you can come in. Yeah.
See off, is she married? Come on up. Oh, cool. Oh, that's great.
Oh, that's great.
They didn't reject me.
They unsold things. We think, okay. Love it. Thank you.
This is the final call on the casket ballot, the written ballot. Final call, casket, written ballot. Okay, we're going to call the speed back quarter. Well, we have to lay the written ballot, Article 29. Yes, yes.
Well, I wanted to comment that we had a referendum two or three years ago. It's very clear. Um, yeah. How well it keeps the library and I much wanted to why we're doing this all.
I think it's very valid question.
I would turn to the select board. Thank you, man.
Uh, I think, uh, if I can be diplomatic, uh, one of the great things about a democracy is we often reconsider previous votes as new ideas and thoughts come forward.
As moderator, I would ask that we continue. Uh, West Bath School. We have a motion to take Article thirty-five to forty-six. Do, do forty-six?
Thirty-five through forty-six.
Thirty-five to, to forty-six. Out of order? We have a second. Discussion. Can you, can you say that again, please?
My recommendation is that we stop at forty-five because, uh, Article forty-six gets into revenues.
Would either need a... You would be glad to amend?
Sure.
Okay, we have an amendment to take it, Article thirty-five to Article forty-five. And we have the second on that. Yep, we have a second. Is there any discussion? No discussion. Yes.
Isn't that what we're doing by just proceeding forward?
We, the, the difference is we're taking them all collectively with one vote, as opposed to individually.
Oh, I didn't realize that's what you meant. I thought you mentioned we were just doing them out of order, not that we were together.
We haven't, we haven't actually completed Article twenty-nine yet, so... So, so, the motion was to take to...
You mean it as a collective?
To take Articles thirty-five to forty-five out of order. That's the motion. We're not voting on those articles yet. We're voting to take them out of order. Am I clear on that? Yes, sir.
Just note that if we, even if we do them all together, we can have all the discussion you want pertaining to any part.
Yeah, actu- actually, I was wrong to ask for discussion on that because there is a motion to take out of order, which is just a vote. So, I, I apologize. All those in favor of the motion signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Those opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. So, do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to deal with thirty-five to forty-five to one vote.
And we have a second to take Articles thirty-five to forty-five on one vote.
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion? Yes, darling.
Will you be reading them so that...
I can, yes.
Or we just vote it?
Yes. Article thirty-five, to see the sum the town will authorize for the school board of directors to expend for regular instruction. School board, board of directors recommends two million eight hundred twenty-eight thousand three hundred sixty dollars and eighty-six cents. An explanation of this article that covers salaries and benefits for regular education teachers, support personnel, as well as classroom supplies, equipment, books, and repairs for grades K through five. This article also includes the contracted services of pre-kindergarten students and tuition costs for students in grades six through twelve. Article thirty-six is to see the sum the town will authorize the school board of directors to expend for special education. The school board of, the board of directors, the school board of directors recommends nine hundred and three thousand two dollars and seventy-three cents. Explanation of this article provides salaries and benefits for special education teacher and support personnel, K-12 programs, tuition staff, and out-of-district placement and professional services. Article thirty-seven, to see the sum that the town will authorize the school board of directors to expend for career and technical education. The school board of directors recommends zero. The explanation is, career and technical education will be provided through RSE-1 and is included in the tuition rates. Article thirty-eight is to see the sum the town will authorize the school board of directors to expend for other education. School board of directors recommends four thousand five hundred dollars. Explanation on this is that this article includes the cost to provide students with learning experiences not included under the other programs, such as curricular, extracurricular activities. Article thirty-nine, to see what sum the town will authorize the school board of directors to expend for student and staff support. The school board of directors recommends three hundred and sixty-two thousand seven hundred eighty-three dollars and seventy-eight cents. Article forty, uh, no, excuse me. Article forty. Uh, explanation of this article covers salaries, benefits, guidance, health, technology improvements in construction, staff development, library, and student assessment. Article forty is to see what sum the town will authorize the school board of directors to expend for system administration. Administration, school board of directors recommends one hundred and four thousand six hundred six dollars and thirty-six cents. The explanation of this article provides salaries and benefits for the office of superintendent. It also covers expenses for school board of directors, financial software, insurance, advertising, dues and fees, legal fees, and audit and expenses. Article forty-one, to see what sum the town will authorize the school board of directors to expend for school administration. School board of directors recommends two hundred and four thousand eight hundred thirty-five dollars and four cents. The explanation is that this article includes salaries and benefits for the personal and support staff. It includes equipment, supplies, dues, and fees, and contracted services. Article forty-two is to see what sum the town will authorize the school board of directors to expend for transportation. The school board of directors recommends one hundred ninety-five thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars and ninety-six cents. The explanation of this is that the article covers expenses for transport and students in grades K through twelve to and from school. Article forty-three, what sum the town will authorize the school board of directors to expend for facility maintenance. The school board of directors recommends two hundred and thirty-seven thousand seven hundred thirty-six dollars. This article covers expenses for facilities, operations, and contracted services for the West Bath schools and grounds. Article forty-four is to see what sum the town will authorize the school board of directors to expend for debt service and other coverage. The school board of directors recommends zero dollars. There is no current outstanding indebtedness related to the West Bath School. And finally, Article forty-five, to see what sum the town will authorize the school board of directors to expend, other expenditures including food services. The school board of directors recommends fifty thousand dollars. This article covers expenses related to food services programs.
Do we know how much these current expenditures, how they match last year's expenditures so that we know if we're looking at a, a raise or a deficit?
I would, I would yield to our superintendent. I'd recognize our superintendent, sure.
The total proposed budget is an increase of four point eight percent, and the total local contribution is an increase of four point eight nine percent over last year.
Four point eight percent increase. Other questions? Shall we move the question? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Thank you. All those opposed? I see none. Motion carries. Do we have others? Article twenty-nine, to see which option the town would like to fund with Article twenty-eight. Committee did not review this article. Option A, patent-free library. Option B, library of individual choice. By written ballot cast, Patent-Free Library, ninety-nine, choice, ten. Let me continue. Article forty-six, revenues. To see what sum the town will appropriate for the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade twelve, as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act, and to see what sum the town will raise and assess as municipalities' country, as the municipalities' contribution to the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade twelve, as described in accordance with main revised statutes titled Twenty-A, Section fifteen, six, eighty-eight. The school board of directors recommends a total appropriated of three million dollars, twenty-one thousand seven hundred thirty-one dollars and forty-five cents. The school board of directors recommends total raised to be two million six hundred eighty-six thousand nine hundred fifty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents. The state mandated explanation for this, the town's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade twelve, as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act, is the amount of money determined by state law to be the minimum amount that a town must raise and, and assess in order to receive a full amount of state dollars. Is there a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I see none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Those opposed? Motion carries. Article forty-seven, which is required by state law to be a written ballot. To see what sum the town will raise and appropriate in additional local funding, the school board of directors recommends one million eight hundred sixty-nine thousand seven hundred twenty-seven and twenty-eight cents. This, which exceeds the state's essential program of services allocation model, by the school board of directors recommends one million eight hundred nineteen thousand seven hundred twenty-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents, as required the funding budget recommended by the school board of directors. Feel like I've read that twice. The school board of directors recommends one million eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand seven hundred twenty-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents for additional local funds, and gives the following reasons for exceeding state's essential programs and services funding model by one million eight hundred nineteen thousand seven hundred twenty-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents. The additional local funds represents local costs to support school budget programs and services that are not included in the state-funded model, including cost for transportation and special education services. Further explanation. The additional local funds of those locally raised funds over and above the town's local contribution to the town, to the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade twelve, as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act, that will help to achieve the budget for educational programs. That's a lot. Is there a motion? I have a motion, I have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Oh, ballot, I'm sorry. Please, please, please use the white ballot. I think that's the only one you have left. Oh, it's getting light. I can read all of them. We have a question. I need to take a cure. I need to take a cure. Where is the money? I'm like, well, they're getting state money. They're totally bludgeoned if they get some. Yeah. It's on the stomach. A bunch of state. And they're also waiting. And so, it's like, and they don't give it to you after spending time. It's voting by night. You have to stock the bank. I think that's what they want, that you're going to raise the money. This is the last call for the red ballot. Last call for the red ballot. I would like to call the meeting back to order. We have a motion and a second to take articles forty-eight to fifty-one out of order. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Motion carries. Yes. We have a motion and a second to take articles forty-eight to fifty-one in one vote. Point of order? Point of order, yes. I'm just wondering if we can do these when we got the outcome of the vote on article forty. And then it's a summary of questions. Who was prepared to answer that question? The moderator agrees and it's a legitimate question.
I actually think if you have to wait, it wouldn't be excessive to wait for the summary of votes.
Motion is withdrawn. I would also like to take a moment to recognize a non-resident in attendance, but someone who is important to our community, and that is our state representative, Allison Heffler. Thank you.
And I especially like being a secretary where I don't have to vote.
Dolly?
There's going to be a vote for selectmen in June. Do you know who has taken out papers? Do you have any information on that? Is there a meet the candidate night? Because it kind of came out of the blue for me.
The question was, there is a special election for selectmen on June seventeenth. Do we have any candidates who have taken out papers?
Yes, we have one, Ashley Randall, who's standing in the back of the room. I encourage all of you to come meet her, answer her, and ask her lots of tough questions on June fifth at the town office preceding the select war debate.
Since we've just found out about this election, are there opportunities for other people?
Since we've just found out about this election, are there opportunities for other people to get papers to run?
It's closed. It was posted on the website and on the sign that has been out there.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to recognize West Bath School as being an accredited expeditionary learning school, and they renewed last year. It's a process, and it's an incredible program that both my kids went through, and I just want to recognize the hard work they do for that.
While we're all waiting for the results, it's just been known to me that Dawn Lee, who is a resident of our community, has been named Saginaw County Teacher of the Year, and having worked in, near, around her in West, at Morse High School for a number of years, I want to say, well deserved. She's pretty awesome.
If those of you who don't know Dawn, she is the librarian at Morse High School and has been in that position now for about thirty years, yes. Any other announcements?
Can you take a stop, Joel?
I hear you nodding. Or I will not.
I want a Saginaw County membership.
Saginaw County's in good shape right now, yes.
I'm just wondering if we consider articles fifty and fifty-one out of order.
Second.
We have a motion to take articles fifty and fifty-one out of order. We have a second. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? That motion carries.
Do we have a motion to vote?
I'll make a motion that we consider articles fifty and fifty-one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve articles fifty and fifty-one. Other aid to other programs, article fifty, in addition to the amount in article forty-eight, shall the school board of directors be authorized to accept and expand any state, federal, or other grants, aid, or receipts during the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-five, and ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, for school purposes provided that such grants, aid, and receipts do not require the expenditure of other local funds not previously appropriated. The school board of directors recommends a yes vote for this. And article fifty-one, for additional state subsidy, in the event that the town receives more state education subsidy than the amount included in the budget, shall the school board of directors be authorized to use all or part of the additional state subsidy to increase expenditures for school purposes in cost center categories approved by the school board of directors, increase the allocation of finances in a reserve fund approved by the school board of directors, and/or decrease the local cost share expectation as defined in Title Twenty-A, Section fifteen, six seventy-one, subsection A one B, for local property taxpayers for funding public education as approved by the school board of directors. The school board of directors recommends a yes vote on this. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I call for a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Those opposed? Motion carries. Articles fifty and fifty-one are approved. We have results? Article forty-seven. I'm not going to read it. By written ballot, the vote was yeas, ninety-three, nays, ten. Motion carries. Is there any motions? Article forty-eight. We have a motion to take articles forty-eight and forty-nine together. We have a second. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Those opposed? Motion carries. Article forty-eight: to see what sum the town will authorize the school board of directors to spend for fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-five, and ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, for the school administrative unit's contribution to total cost for funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade twelve, as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act. Local funds for non-state funded school construction and debt service, additional local funds for school purposes under main by sagging Title Planning, Section fifteen, six ninety, undesignated fund balances, tuition receipts, state subsidies, and other receipts for the support of schools. The school board of directors recommends four million, eight hundred and ninety-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents. This article is the summary article and approval expenditures for the purpose, proposed budget of four million, eight hundred and ninety-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents. The article authorizes the school board of directors to spend the revenues on the amount appropriated in the pre-kindergarten. This article does not raise any additional money. The estimated revenue sources are: local contribution, two million, six hundred and eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents; additional local contribution, one million, eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty- cents; and EPS, essential programs and services state subsidy, of three hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixty cents, for a total of four million, eight ninety-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents. Article forty-nine, cost center transfers, shall the school board of directors be authorized for transfers now exceeding five percent of the total appropriation for any school, any cost center to another cost center, or among other cost centers, for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six fiscal year, provided that transfers shall not be permitted to increase the authorized local school budget. The school board of directors recommends a yes vote on that. Those are the articles and the motion to approve. Is there any discussion? This gentleman.
Hold on one second. All right. I have a pretty loud voice. I know. All right. Paul Coombs, I'm chairman of the investment committee at town. I'd just like to point out something about the overall school budget, and I think school here is doing a great job, and board of directors are doing a great job. On top of page nine, you see the three contributions. The state subsidy under the Essential Programs and Services part is seven percent of the school budget. The state has always said that they will pay fifty-five percent. Now, that's an unrealistic figure, given the way the formula works, and it's very complicated. But even if we got a thirty-five percent reimbursement, that would be twenty percent of our mill rate for this year, a million and three, basically. So, there's, the state subsidy system for education is broken, and we're going to need to address this because it really hurts, it really hurts the average taxpayer in every town that is a minimum receiver, like Baharmer, a lot of the towns up in the county, even Wells. So, it's just something for your consideration. This is, this is the place where the state is actually, I hate to use the word, screwing us, but one point three million dollars would, as they say, be twenty percent of our mill rate. So, this is something we're going to have to address in the future. Thank you.
Other comments?
I'd like to, my name's Robert Weir. I'm a newly elected member of the school board in November. And one of the reasons I ran for the school board is because I was concerned about what Paul just commented on. There's a, there's a constitutional amendment that has been passed by our legislative, by our citizens of our state, that says that the state of Maine is going to provide fifty-five percent of the cost of K through twelve education in public schools. Buried in that constitutional amendment is some fine print that tells us that, well, there's some exceptions to this fifty-five percent, and these are towns that have high-value real estate, like wealthy homes along the New Meadows River, as an example. Our town, because we are considered a minimum, a wealthy town, have been classified as a minimum receiver. We don't get fifty-five percent. As Paul just said, we get something close to seven percent of our, the money that is needed to run our school education system. And I think it's a travesty that we have this going on, because I drive up and down roads in West Bath. Yes, there are some wealthy homes and so forth, but there's a whole lot of people living in trailers and modest homes, and they get burned by the tax rate that we have to charge them to cover the education because we're not getting what the state could or should, in my opinion, do. I've been talking to Allison Heffler, our state representative. Paul Coombs, who spoke a minute ago, has been very active with Allison Heffler, trying to understand how we could change this. One of the problems is that the way the legislature funds the education is one big pot of money for the state. One big pot of money for the state. And, and, and so, if we would get our seven percent, say moved to thirty-five percent, as Paul suggested, because somebody passed a resolution that got through the legislature, it would take money away from somebody else. And we're way outnumbered. There aren't very many of us. There's forty school districts in the state approximately that are minimum receivers. And I just think we all need to understand what's going on in the cost of our education. I, I have to, you know, I sat and proved all the money that's being spent from the taxpayers on our school education system, which by the way, is ranked number five in the state, the West Bath school district. We should be proud of that. I think, I think that our school principal superintendent, Emily Thompson, is a big part of that. And I'll just tell you, just a little detail. The school board wanted her to have a percent increase in her salary, and we approved it. She refused to take it, all of it. She reduced it by two or three percent because she said, "I don't want to earn more in a pay raise than my teachers do." That's absurd.
Thank you, Mr. Aaron Swirley. I'm going to ask you to wrap it up.
I'm done.
Okay. Thanks.
Paul Vintel, can you explain the additional local contribution? I don't understand where that comes from.
I would call on school superintendent Emily Thompson.
So the Essential Programs and Services full funding model has a way of determining how much needs to be raised in order to get your subsidy. And so that amount is, for West Bath, is two million, six hundred and eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents. So we raise that, and then we are able to access the state subsidy. And then we need to raise the additional local contribution to be able to make sure that we can fund what the true cost of education is.
Thank you.
So really, the local contribution is those top two numbers in article forty-eight. And you have to raise the top one in order to get the third one. And then you have to raise the second one to meet your budgeted expenses for the year. I think I explained that. Other questions, comments? Yes.